I believe we can get started.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good morning, everybody. Today is January 16th and welcome to this year's Saturday Budget Work Session. So I would like to call this meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, if you could get roll call for board members, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Present.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger. And I'll come back to her at the end. Dr. Kraft.
I'm here.
Ms. McKeever.
Here.
Ms. Perrier.
Present.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
And I'll ask one more time, Ms. Bryson Morsberger. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Now, if I could ask for a motion for approval of our proposed agenda, please.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll take roll, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger. Dr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. McKeever.
Yes.
Perrier.
Yes.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I just wanted to quickly thank everybody for being here this morning. Thank staff. This is, I was sharing before, this is such a unique time in so many ways and our first time running this budget work session via Zoom. And as always, staff has worked extremely hard to get all of this together, so I do want to extend my gratitude to everybody for all of the work, all of the meetings, the time, the behind the scenes effort and work that's been put together. So, thank you very much. I look forward to hearing this all and Dr. Atkins, if you would like to start our presentation, thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning to the school board members and good morning to our staff. I too want to say thank you to all of the staff for your late hours, your concentrated attention to the development of this budget. Developing a budget is one of the most important things that a school division can do because it sets the stage for the upcoming school year and how we will provide for our students, for our staff, and for our community in the educational sphere. Board members, it's the most important decision, a second, well, one of two really important decisions that you make hiring of the superintendent and determining how we will allocate any funding that comes into our school division. We have approached this budget with intentionality, with a focus on equity in an era of COVID, having in mind that COVID has affected our teachers, our staff, our students, and our families. So we have developed this budget with the intention to provide services and supports for all of our stakeholders so that we can help bridge the gap between any loss or any decrease that we realized in our learning and student learning and staff development or in the support of staff during this time of COVID. We acknowledge that everyone has been through and still going through very difficult times. This budget is intended to provide a bridge and a landing ramp for our school division and for our most precious commodity, our children and our staff and our teachers as we try to remove ourselves from the effects of COVID. So we have three priorities in this budget. The first one is, as usual, to recruit and retain highly qualified teachers and staff. The second one is to maintain continuity of high-quality instructional programs. And you will see in this budget that we are focused on supporting our students and our teachers and to apply a lens of equity in all of our funding considerations, and we have done that in this budget. We will start off with Ms. Kim Powell, our Assistant Superintendent of Operations. She'll present the budget. I will then give a detailed list of the items, item by item, that we have in the budget. And then we will present to the board our funding request from council and how we propose to cover the expenses that will be outlined in this budget. And we'll open it up for questions for our board. Ms. Powell.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Good morning to the board and our new chair, Ms. Torres. Good to see you and thanks, again, thanks to everyone who worked so hard together with finance to get this together for today's work session. Leslie, I see you'll be driving, so thank you. I didn't know which way. We hadn't talked about that part of this before. You can go ahead and advance to the next slide. So I'm going to provide some overview information. We're going to talk briefly about enrollment and revenues and then we'll get into the heart of this work session, which is talking about the budget changes and the actual budget requests. And of course, we always wrap up with a summary and next steps, Leslie. Okay, so for the overview information, the first thing that we provided in the packet today is this pie chart. It's a classic, but it's always a good thing to give you the latest. So based on our current budget, this shows you the breakdown between salaries and wages, benefits, the contract services, which include things like our city contracts, our insurances, a lot of mandatory.
And this is what we'd be telling Gabrielle that is safe.
Sorry, so anyway, you can see the pie chart there and as always, the main point is we are people business and most of our investment is in salaries, wages, and benefits. And you can see that clearly in the pie chart. Education, it's all about people. So, next chart, Leslie. So, oh, this pie chart looks a little different coming over into the PDF here, but I think it shows up better in your printed materials. But this, this chart shows how our current budget aligns with the strategic plan and in the three major areas. The growing relationships. Well, actually, I'm going to need to read this from the, look at your printed version because for some reason this is not showing up correctly on the screen. I think it's slipped, yeah. Yeah, I thought. So you'll want to look at your printed material at this point. The majority of our I don't know, something weird, something strange happened in the translation to Google Slides from the PowerPoint on this pie. But you can just, if the board members will please just look at your booklet, 72% of our funding goes towards diverse, inclusive, and rigorous learning experiences. Then 14% to supported and supportive staff and then 14% to growing relationships as far as and that's just another way to look at how the budget is apportioned. Leslie, just go on to the next slide because that one is a mystery to me, how it's coming up. Thank you. But again, to the board members, your printed materials, the chart is intact there. So, Dr. Atkins has already covered this and we've been talking about this for over a month now. What the, we've had pretty much a laser focus going into this budget. Again, it's a people business, so recruiting and retaining highly qualified staff, always a priority and no less so under the challenging circumstances that we're facing now. Maintaining the continuity of our high-quality instructional programs is, you know, really paramount. And then always applying a lens of equity in all the decisions we're making through this process. So, Leslie, next one. So just a brief reminder of some grace we have for this year, and I just don't want us to take it for granted because it can be very rare that we face a budget cycle where we're not having some items in the big gear, if you will, that gears, that set of gears icons that show kind of what's driving the process. We're able to focus on maintaining a lot of what we want to, you know, it's very important to this community in this budget because fortunately, we don't have things like an LCI change, local composite index of ability to pay, that has big impacts on our state revenues when that changes. We also don't have big changes in our pension or health insurance this year. And so that's really something that I want to point out again, our nice grace, if you will, that we have with all the other challenges we're facing. This year is somewhat exceptional in that none of these three are big driving forces for us. Next slide, Leslie. Okay, so for enrollment, the details of this are in the appendix of the presentation, but we are looking at decreased enrollment with, with all the other challenges we have. We, we, one thing that we did have to factor into this budget is the state, the status of our current enrollment and how we feel that's going to translate to next year. And the bottom line is that we think we're going to recover about 65% of the enrollment, the ADM, that we lost for this year. And again, Charlottesville's not alone in facing a loss in enrollment. That's why there's a whole harmless provision in the governor's proposed budget that's so important for Charlottesville and most every other school district across the state. So Leslie, you can go to the next slide. So, so I gave a nod to the state funding. Let's take a moment before we go into this next piece where we're going to talk about each of the different funding sources. This pie chart shows how our funding, where the money comes from, if you will. And you can see very clearly, the city appropriation is essential. What the city does for, for supporting education is the main driver. And there's a chart in your, actually a couple of different charts in your appendix from Jim Regenball, the consultant with BML, that speak to the fact that, again, Charlottesville's not unique for this. So much of what does or does not happen for communities' education programs depends heavily on the local investment. And that is, that is a trend that has been growing more and more so, that there's been more and more put on the localities to fund quality education programs as opposed to the funding support that's been available from the state or the federal government. Now, we are entering into a little bit of a unique situation for the coming year because of CARES, and we're going to be talking a lot more about that as we go forward. But this is just, again, to kind of get everyone grounded. We've talked, the pie chart in the beginning, where the money goes by function. This one, where the money comes from. All right, next slide, Leslie. So, the state revenue piece, you've seen this before. This was part of our earlier update in January. The two key things we want to highlight from the governor's proposed budget is, as of right now, what's in there is a funding allocation based on the state funding formulas, that it's money that goes towards a 2%, what they're calling a bonus for the funded instructional and support personnel. So there is a lot of talk that this could change and at least become, the funding would be only, you'd only be eligible for it if it's a raise, not a bonus. So it could shift to a raise as far as the requirements around that funding. And there's some talk that it could be increased, but, you know, we will have to wait and see. The no-loss funding, we've talked about how very important that is for our budget and all the other schools in the Commonwealth, the school divisions. And the key with the no-loss funding is we are essentially looking at level funding from the state for next year. And the no-loss funding is essential to that, to it being level and not being a big reduction. In the net, right now, it looks like we would have about $32,781 in additional state funding for next year. Next slide, Leslie. So now we're going to shift and look at the cities, the outlook for our city funding. And this is from Jim Regenball's most recent presentation to superintendents and school business officials. And it's just a, looking back at the last time we were in financial straits, anything like this, which was the Great Recession, if you will. And when that occurred, cities were a little bit slower to recover with revenue, and this is just some data points relevant to that. Next slide, Leslie. So, with keeping that in mind and, and based on the fact that what we are hearing from the city is that they are experiencing much revenue shortfalls and much uncertainty around revenue. And any increase in property tax revenues is expected to be offset or more than overshadowed by losses in meals and lodging taxes. So keeping that in mind, as we move forward through the work session today, what you're going to see is that the recommendation from, from the team at this point is to leverage the CARES funding to maintain valued programs and address the pressing needs of our students in a way that allows some time or a little bit of a runway, if you will, for the city to recover and stabilize revenues. And so that's kind of an overarching theme that we'll be discussing more as we go through the recommendations. Next slide, Leslie. So, the star of the show, if you will, for fiscal year 2022, the federal revenue. You can see here a summary of how the significant CARES dollars have come to us here for Charlottesville City Schools. We received the initial allocation of what's called the CARES funding in August. And you can see how that money is being used so far. There was a smaller allocation that came to us later in the fall that we had a very tight turnaround time to spend. And so because of that, we didn't, we were able to back off, if you will, some of the spending on the, from the CARES 1 funding, which was, which was great. And then we have recently found out that there is a second allocation of CARES funding coming to schools. And you can see there the 4.4, almost 4.5 million that is, that we have been advised is in the CARES 2 allocation for Charlottesville City Schools. Sorry about that. So at this time, what we are planning for our net CARES funding position to be at the end of the school year is the 5.3 million that you see there. Dr. Atkins, would you like to add any comments about CARES funding at this time? Okay, I'll continue.
Ms. Power, if you continue, I'll add some comments at the end when we get to bringing the, the revenue and the expenses together.
Together, sure. Thanks. I just know this is such a big item. Okay, thank you. So Leslie, next, next slide. That's just, again, we're trying to get everyone grounded on the revenue side before we get to the meat of our discussion today, which is our budget changes and requests. And let's see.
So, before you move on, I'd say a quick question. Do we want to ask questions now or as, as we go along or wait to the end?
Dr. Atkins.
Madam Chair.
Whatever works best for you, I guess, if, maybe if we want to separate it, if there are specific revenue questions and then, and then moving on to the expense.
So I just had two questions. One, I think it was 32,000 additional dollars that we think we may get from the state. And I think it was 4.8 million from CARES 2 Act. How certain are we specifically of the additional CARES Act money? That seems pretty specific and I didn't, you know, because I think that, I thought that President-elect Biden was still kind of pulling together his $2 trillion, you know, proposal and things like that, but that sounds pretty specific. Can you just talk a little bit more about where that number came from and how confident you are with it?
We have received notification from the Department of Education that the funds, they have received confirmation that the funds have been approved. And each school division in the Commonwealth have been given an estimate of the allocation. So I believe this was passed at the federal level prior to our president-elect developing that multi-trillion dollar recovery package. So this was right after the CARES 1 and now the CARES 2 has been approved.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other revenue questions? Thank you.
All right, let's go to the expense side of the house. We know the revenue. We know that what we are operating on is that the city will have diminished revenue, so their ability to help respond to the expenses that we may incur in the upcoming school year will be limited. So we will be building this budget on our ability to leverage the CARES dollars. The caveat that I want everyone to keep in mind is CARES dollars are one-time funding. So we are doing something we've never done before in the development of our budget. We recognize that our students and our staff will need a significant amount of support going into the fall of 21-22, which we anticipate we will be back fully face-to-face in the fall. We know that we need to get supports in place in order to provide a healthy learning environment and a healthy teaching environment for our staff. Knowing that we have an additional $4.4 million in two ESSER or CARES 2 funding, we are going to be recommending that we use those dollars in order to put in the supports that we feel would be beneficial to students and staff. I'll go over line by line those items that we would like to add to our budget in the areas of support and then talk to you in just a moment about how we recommend to use the CARES funding to cover those.
And Dr. Atkins, we have two general slides before we get into the specifics. If you'd like me to cover those quickly and then.
Yes, please.
Line by line. Leslie, so this is just, again, it's so important to keep it, remember what our overarching priorities are in what you're about to see. Leslie, next slide. This is just a quick reminder to everyone that in, at any point in this process, if you want to just look at what we're asking for now and relate that to the current budget, there is always available to everyone through our website under departments and then on the left-hand side, budgets. That'll take you to our, our main finance webpage and, and then under budget resources, as you scroll down, if you select previous years, you can, you can access all of our budget books. And so you, if you click on the FY 2021 budget, actually even in this presentation, if you select that, where it says FY 2021 budget, it brings up the whole budget book. And Renee Hoover, our finance director, has done tremendous work on prior year's budgets and this budget so far. And because of her tremendous efforts, we are actually on the pathway to the meritorious budget award. That, last year was the first year of the budget for the current fiscal year is the first time we received, or actually the first time we applied for that recognition and that review. And so she's, she's just done tremendous work there. If anyone has any questions about this, but I just wanted to make, remind everyone that the resource is readily available.
I can write.
So we can, yeah, I know Leslie is checking in with Dr. Atkins right now, I believe. But that is just a a reminder to everyone. I don't know if I click on it in this view, if it works like PowerPoint. I don't think it does. But anyway, there you go. So now we move into the detail, line by line, elements of the budget changes and requests. So this will go back to Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Ms. Power. Congratulations.
Dr. Atkins, before you began, I think we should call, name the other page in honor of Ned Micky. He would love to be able to easily access previous budgets. And so it's a little bit late for him, but it's good to access it so easily. So thank you.
The Ned Micky access page. That's what, you've got to change it on your website.
Mr. Micky, we finally heard you.
Yep, the Ned Micky access page. There you go.
We wanted to make that easier for any board members today as we're talking about our expense side of the house. The additional expense side of the house, to access any of our previous documents, projections, budget, all of that is right before you. So our recommendation for additional expenses in the FY 22 budget are, if we start with salary actions, we are recommending a 2% salary increase.
There you go, Leslie.
Thank you. We are recommending a 2% salary increase for our teachers. And that would be to move them up one step on the salary scale and then add a .75 to that step to equate to an average of a 2% salary increase. For our support staff, we also would recommend a 2% salary increase, move up one step on the salary scale. And to our support staff, we would add a 1% to that step forward to equate to 2%. Administrative staff, again, 2%, moving up one step and adding a .75. The next one is a significant one for us is our nurse pay scale. Now, we have done a look at, in the surrounding school divisions, pay scales, and we've done some comparative analysis. And we've realized that our nurses, their pay scale is not in alignment with the region. So we would recommend making an adjustment to the nurse pay scale to bring out LPNs and our RNs in alignment with the regional scales and to also recognize the, there's a distinction between the LPNs and the RNs. They would be on the same scale, but our RNs, because of the degree that's associated with it, they will get an additional stipend. So adjusting the nurse pay scale. Nurses have been essential in responding to COVID. Our nurses, I'd like our community to know that many of our nurses have volunteered to be a part of the, giving the, the COVID vaccine shots. And they have, in the process now, going through training and will make themselves available to help in any way that they can. And we want to thank our nurses for all that they have done. We also would recommend head custodian pay scale. Currently, the differential between our custodians and our head custodians is very slight, is less than $2,000. And our head custodians have a heavy lift in making sure that the mitigation is in place, making sure that our schools, the coordination of, of keeping our schools clean and attractive and following through with the mitigation. So we are recommending an adjustment in the head custodian pay scale. The non-discretionary contracts, insurance, the general liability, workers' compensation, and pupa transportation. Those are three areas that will see increases in our general liability property insurance. There's a $10,000 increase. Workers' compensation, a $10,000 increase. Pupa transportation, there will be a $140,265 increase. But go back up to the salary actions, the 2% salary increase for teachers would cost us $760,507. The support staff, the 2%, $128,416. Administrative staff with 2% will be $218,158. The nurse pay scale to align with the region will cost us $177,537. And adjusting our custodial pay scale will be $49,963. For total salary actions, $1,334,581. With our non-discretionary area in the insurance, general liability insurance, the workers' comp, and the city contract with pupa transportation, the total will be $160,265. Next slide, please. Maybe the next one, it won't go.
I'm sorry, Dr. Atkins, may I just ask a quick question about that, the salary? Is, is the amount, is our salary increase the same, is it taking into account the governor's recommendation for a bonus? Or is that totally separate? Is that something completely separate? The bonus, which he said may turn into a salary increase.
When the governor made the recommendation for the bonus, rather than putting in our budget a one-time bonus and not a salary increase, we made the decision to move forward with a salary increase, which will affect VRS and its ongoing. A bonus would be a one-time event for our employees and we thought it would be more important for us to have a continuation of that 2% effect for our employees. If the governor goes in and changes it to a salary increase and we need to make any additional adjustments to this recommendation, we will come back in and apprise the board of that recommendation. Now, we absolutely want to make sure that any opportunity that we have in order to recognize the work that our, our staff, our teachers and our staff do for our students, that we're able to do that. So we would quickly come back and recognize that in this budget.
Wonderful.
So, Dr. Atkins, based on that statement, if it should come back the way Sheri just indicated, would that have an implication for our salary increases to make them go up? Or would you use the funds that are currently allocated for these increases and shift them somewhere else? If, in fact, the monies that he gave would allow you to. If in fact, the monies that he gave would allow you to do the two percent that's currently on this paper?
Ms. Perry, that's a great question. What we would do is is first better understand how the governor structures that two percent. We do understand that there are three or four General Assembly members who are introducing a bill to increase teacher salaries by over four percent. So the governor may make the decision to go beyond the two percent and increase those salaries more than that. We will, if the governor recommends anything over two percent, we will absolutely bring back to the board a recommendation that aligns with that. Our goal, our strategic goal has been to get our salaries up to market level. And that's a BS degree starting at $60,000 a year. We're close to $50,000 now, but if there's any opportunity for us to get closer to the starting salary for our teachers at 60,000, we would certainly embrace that.
I have one last question. You're doing your alignment with your regional market for your nursing pay scale. Does that include our current staff as well as any new people that you would bring in? Or is this for, is this just for new hires?
This is for our current staff and new hires. So our current staff will, HR will move them, if the budget is approved, our HR will move them to the new scale.
Okay, okay.
We realize we have advertised for nurses, we have a couple of our nurses are retiring. We have advertised nurses for nursing positions and we have had difficulty filling those positions. We're hoping that this recommendation and once it is approved would help to attract a deeper pull.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Can I have the numbers, the nurse pay scale disaggregated? Because I, it's it's and the head custodian pay scale, is that one person or is that also several people?
That's that's all about head custodians.
So like per. Can we have those numbers disaggregated to include like per person? Like, like we have it basically, the the percentage increase raise. Can we have like the average increase of raise that reflects?
We certainly can. We'll get that for you, Ms. McKeever.
Okay.
We do have some additional information in the appendix, but we don't have that and we'll be glad to get that too.
Okay. And then with respect to the, I don't see health insurance on here and that's usually a very significant driver. So I was just wondering, and I looked at the next couple of pages, I didn't see anything about it. But maybe you all, could you also respond to what's going on with that? Thank you.
Ms. Powell, you want to, I think you had a slide that went over the health insurance with no changes.
Sure, yeah, that we we didn't have, and Renee Hoover can chime in here as well if she'd like to add anything. But we have been fortunate and I would say that part of this may be because there was a, and if you've been following this in the the news, there's been some reference to this. There's a, there's been a slowdown in non-essential, if you will, or or just people getting medical attention or or taking care of things perhaps. This is not necessarily a good thing in the big picture, but people haven't been going to the doctor as much or to specialists as much unless they have to be because of COVID. And so we've seen some savings with regard to that. Now, our prescription piece of our plan, we have not had any savings. And so it's kind of the two have worked together to kind of be a wash, if you will. So we didn't get a decrease in our rates when we, we've been working with our insurance consultant, broker, Pierce Group Benefits, we didn't, we don't see a decrease, but fortunately, we also don't have an increase. And it's, there's a lot of different factors that are, could be contributing to that. Renee, would you like to add anything to that synopsis of the insurance situation?
No, you you described it well. It's it's due to the electric procedures not being available to everyone from March to to May that that lower our claims that we're able to carry that savings over and help keep our rates level.
Right. Thank you, Stan. So the next area that we'd like to go over is the school-based program supports and improvements. A very important part of our budget and and the meaty part of our budget. So we will start with internet access for students. During COVID, we are extremely pleased that our technology department has been able to deploy a device to each one of our students. So we have 100% saturation with devices, whether we supply them or the families already had one in place. 100% saturation with our students. And we also, I won't say 100, but we have 99.9% saturation with internet access for our students. We've deployed hotspots throughout our community and individual homes so that our students have access. What we realize is that access is one of the inequalities that we have, not only locally, but across the Commonwealth and the nation. Without internet access, our students will not be able to engage effectively in learning. That we, that's been demonstrated during COVID time. But it also heightens our awareness that when students leave our school during the regular school year, when we are in in the buildings face to face, when they go home, if they don't have internet access, that is an equity issue. When they get up in the mornings and they want to do work prior to leaving their homes and they don't have internet access, that's an equity issue. When our families don't have internet access in order to log into Power School in order to keep up with what's going on and ask questions about what's happening with their student, that's an equity issue. In order to respond to that equity issue, we are recommending that we put a line item that will remain in our budget to provide remote learning access to our students. We have a very effective contact right now with T-Mobile with the devices, the hotspots that we've given to our students. And we would like to continue that even when we return face to face so that our students will have access and our families will have access in their homes. And there's a criteria for handing those out, of course. But they will have access when they go home to get homework done. So internet access for students, the remote learning, 91,200. Zoom, most of our families know that word and have used it quite a bit. It came to our attention through COVID, so we would like to continue with Zoom as a tool for the delivery of instruction when we return face to face. And again, we anticipate that will be, we will be fully face to face in the fall. So that would be $25,000 to continue with Zoom. Our families also have have responded very nicely and our teachers and our staff to remind. It's a communication tool platform, 13,772. Nusella is a literacy content platform that helps to adjust the literacy content to match the readability of the student so that all students can be learning about the same thing. However, the the reading material is adjusted to match the student's reading level. We'd like to continue with that. Some of our schools have used it. CHS and Buput have been using that this year and found that it's very effective, 17,900. Social workers, we were very fortunate during COVID that a philanthropic gift that Stephanie Randolph worked with us to help secure $500,000 to place social workers at our high school, Buput and Walker. Two social workers at the high school, two social workers at Buput and one at Walker in order to be able to respond to the needs about the social emotional needs of our students and our families and our staff during COVID was the impetus for helping us to start moving in the direction of the supportive environment, the supportive learning and providing the additional layer of of support for our students. We would recommend to the board that we add six and a half social workers in addition to the ones that we have been able to secure through the $500,000 gift, that we add six and a half social workers. That would be to our pre-K schools and to LMA. We would place a social worker and at each of our elementary schools, a point five at LMA. And then we would keep the ones that we have allocated based on the gift. And then we would redistribute the ones, the social workers who are already in our our school division. What we believe this model will look like is in our elementary schools, we would have one social worker per school. Walker, we would have two. Buput, three. And the high school would have four social workers. And that would be the additional 6.5 with the ones purchased through the gift and the ones that are currently on staff. And we can answer any questions that you have in just a moment with that. Instructional assistants, last year, because of some budget cuts, we had just the prior budget cycle put another IA in our second grade classes, making, bringing them up to two IAs in the the second grade. And we will, I think I may have misspoken on that too. HR will correct me if I did. But we would like to replace the second grade instructional assistants that we had to cut from the budget last year. And that's 234,528. The social workers would be 542,399. And the instructional assistants, that would be six instructional assistants. Assistant principal at the high school, at Charlottesville High School, we did during the FY twenty-one budget, we cut one of the assistant principals or did not hire one of the assistant principals at the high school. We'd like to replace that. We do realize that students coming back face to face will have some challenges, acclimating. We want to make sure that the high school is equipped. We are in discussion about safety and security and how we might move from the model that was in place to a model that looks at the social emotional needs of our students. So this would be along with our social workers, building the foundation for being able to implement a program once our advisory committee makes a recommendation. That would cost us 106,663. I will mention for our public that this does include benefits, salary and benefits in these salaries. Reading specialists at Greenbrier, they currently have one, we would recommend add another one, 83,446. And the STAR program, the Structured Teaching Autism Resource Program, we would add two positions, STAR positions. One would be for Walker and one would be Buput. We have a group of students moving that have been in the STAR program at Buput. At Walker, will be moving up to Buput. Walker has realized the some significance of success with the STAR program. But he has used in-house resources pulling those together. We would allocate one FTE to Walker to continue with developing that program and then to Buput. Math specialists for Charlottesville High School, our K through eight schools do have math specialists in their schools. The high school would then have a math specialist also, not only to work with our students in intervention and remediation, but also in enrichment. We would work with our students who are struggling with Algebra I, but we would also be working with our students who are in honors, dual enrollment and AP classes who are non-traditional students, helping them to shore up their skill set to ensure success. That would be $83,446, $83,446. And then we would recommend adding a fine arts teacher at Buput, giving them more flexibility in their electives, more flexibility in their master schedule. Again, $83,446. We have entered into a partnership with Virginia State University and it too is called the STARS Program, Students Training to be Teachers and Reaching Success. That would be at Charlottesville High School. Students who entered this program, which will be available next year, entering this program, they, if they continue the high school program and meet the criteria, they may attend Virginia State University with tuition paid through a grant that Virginia State University would would offer. So we want to encourage our teachers, our students to be a part of this program so that they can start down the pathway of being teachers, being educators. That would cost us $35,889. We would recommend a literacy, a point five literacy specialist at LMA. Again, that would be 35,889, providing support for our students as they're returning in COVID. Lead teacher stipend, grades K through six. We have, we have lead teachers that start at grade seven through 12. This would be adding to that complement and that would be 38 teachers. Lead teacher stipends for our pre-K teachers. Pre-K teachers are making a lot of adjustments. If we are, we're moving towards face to face March 8th. When we return face to face, our preschool students will be housed at Camp Park Street. Camp Park Street.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Who's our partner for preschool housing?
Oh, the Methodist Church, if we needed them, is that?
The Methodist Church on Park Street.
Downtown, yes. First United Methodist.
First United Methodist, thank you. I didn't want to say the name wrong. So our preschool teachers are working very hard. They they will help us to make sure that our students are served well in that setting during COVID era. Our preschool teachers do a lot, so adding them into the stipend would be, give us a depth of service that I think would be beneficial.
Can I ask you one question about the stipends? Because it appears reg, you know, between lead teacher, pre-K to special ed, it's $1,500 per teacher, but that the lead teacher stipend for grade K through six is 1342. And I was wondering if that was like a typo, if you meant to do 1,500 per?
It is. It should be 57. I just got a text from staff telling me that that 51,000, and I'm sorry, I did not say that. That 51,000 should be 57,000.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. McKeever.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So that the lead teacher stipend for grade, grades K through six, instead of 51,000, it should be 57,000. Thank you. Lead teacher stipend for ESL, we would have, our ESL population over the years has grown. So we would want the coordination at that level also. Leads stipend for special education teachers. We have a significant number of students who receive special education services. Our teachers do an amazing job providing those services. And now to actually have a lead to help with the coordination, not only within schools, but across grade levels throughout the whole school division. Our math specialists, this was an item that we had included in in the recommendation in our FY twenty-one budget, but had to cut that. We would add 10 additional contract days. It would be for continue with content development, continue with professional learning, continue with planning for professional learning and delivery for professional learning. That would be $31,000. The lead teacher stipends for special education teachers and for pre-K teachers, 9,000 for pre-K teachers, 7,500 for ESL, 10,500 for special education and $31,000 for the 10 additional contract days for our math specialists. Content squads, our stipends. Currently, we have approximately 40 teachers, teacher types who are working on the alignment of high-quality lessons with our standards and uploading those in Canvas. We believe that it has been beneficial to our teachers and to our staff as our teachers are learning to use Canvas and to deliver great instruction in the virtual setting. Having ready access to plans and instruction that they can either use as it is or tweak to make it their own has been invaluable. We'd like to continue to provide that service for our students so that, for our teachers, be it a seasoned teacher or a teacher new to our school division, that there are resources that are ready to go, already loaded in our Canvas so that teachers can be off and running quickly. The content squads, the cost would be 56,000. And that would be for approximately 40 teachers. Substitute teacher, teacher honorarium. But our board talked about this and we had a committee that looked at this last year. We wanted to include it. We wanted to include it in the FY twenty-one budget, but were unable to. We'd like to encourage a deep pool of teacher substitutes. And we would recognize our teachers and one of the components of this honorarium is that if a teacher, if a substitute goes to a school ten times in a month, there's an additional pay that that substitute would receive. So we want to encourage a deep pool, but we also want to encourage continuity in the substitutes reporting to the individual schools and to recognize and thank them for being a part of our system. Our books, we need to update our books. We're doing quite a bit of work on changing the narrative, making sure that we are inclusive, that DEI is a part, diversity, equity, and inclusion is a part of our culture and our instructional program. So we'd like to update our K through twelve book rooms. And that cost would be sixty thousand dollars. Materials and supplies, we've been sending home science materials during COVID for our students. And it's been great when teachers are teaching a lesson, students have the materials at home that they can use for those science projects. We'd like to continue to replenish those supplies and use them as appropriate once we return face-to-face. That would be six thousand dollars in addition to what they already have. Musical instruments, last year we reported to the board the increase of a diverse group of students in orchestra and band, starting at Walker. We increased the number of instruments that we were leasing. And with more instruments, you have more maintenance and repair. So this would be responding to the need for more, keeping those instruments in good working order, twenty thousand dollars. Athletic trainer, we have currently an athletic trainer at the high school. And our contract provider has changed and the cost of that is, there's also a change, twelve thousand, one hundred and five dollars for that contract. Bringing our school-based program supports and improvement to one million, eight hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred thousand, one million, eight hundred, eight thousand, two, five hundred seventy-five dollars total.
Plus that six thousand.
Yes, plus six thousand, thank you.
Dr. Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to cut over you. But before you go forward, I think I may know the answer to this question, but I need to ask it to make sure. When we are discussing the stipends in the various categories, are those dollar amounts based on the current number of lead teachers we have in those areas? Or is it a combination of their current degrees that they have? Because you know, we give a stipend if a person has a bachelor's plus a master's or a master's and an ed specialist degree. Because I see that, I mean, it's real clear, we've got different dollar amounts for the different stipends. So is it based on the number of people that we have or the particular degrees that each of these individuals currently hold as it relates to a stipend?
I'm going to ask one of the staff members, either Ms. Powell or Dr. Hubbard, you want to, thank you.
So Ms. Perry, in answer to your question, the, the stipends are not degree-specific. The stipends are based on the additional duties that teachers will be taking on in these lead positions. And it's consistent with the stipend that we currently pay to our lead, to, to, to department leads that we have now at the middle and the high school.
Okay.
I hope that answers your question.
It certainly does. May I ask you one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have our teacher honorarium for substitutes, which I think is a great idea. But we all know that we're having problems getting substitutes. So do we feel that with this honorarium, it will be easier for us to find people?
Well, we're hoping that it would help us to attract more people to the pool. We have been, my department has been training teachers all year to substitute teachers. We brought a few more onboard, but you're right, it is a hard position to fill. But yes, we're hoping that that would attract more people. And if you'd like to know what dollar amounts for those are, I could give you that as well for, for ten extra days of coverage and twenty days. That's what's in, that's what's in the proposal.
So if you, so if you don't, so if you don't mind at some, yes, Dr. King. If you, if you don't mind, at some point, you don't have to do it today, but at some point. So we will see how that, you know, how that flushes out. If I'm doing it for ten days or if I'm here for twenty days, you know, yada, yada. Okay.
And it's not just, before you say something, Dr. King, it's not just at one school. We track if you do it ten, ten times throughout the district. You could be at various schools and get that, so it's not school-specific.
Right, I got, okay, thank you. Okay. All right, Dr. King, I'm ready.
I, I think you, the two of you landed. I just wanted to bring clarity to it is supporting substitute recruitment, substitute teachers that cover, that substitute at a school for a set number of times in a month. It also for teachers at the, at all of our schools, if they are covering a class a certain number of times a month, as well as giving hourly pay for our instructional assistance. So we are looking at supporting and trying to ensure that classes are covered when their teacher is absent in multiple ways.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And if staff would update this total for the school-based program supports and improvement at the six thousand dollars to that total, thank you. Next page. So school operations, we, we certainly want to acknowledge that we still know that there will be a requirement for mitigation when we return in fall twenty-one. We have earmarked a hundred thousand dollars for COVID mitigation supplies, but do know that there will be some additional CARES funding that's available for us to respond as appropriate. Reductions, Kim Powell talked about our enrollment and enrollment trends. We did lose students this year. Some of our families made decisions to homeschool or to educate their students in other ways, rather than sending them or having them to be a part of our virtual program. We, we've heard from many of those families that their intent is to return in the fall. Our intent is to welcome them back in the fall. We want them back. We, we would love to embrace them when we turn, return in the fall face-to-face. We do, however, in developing this budget, we factored in a recovery of sixty-five percent of the students. So with that recovery, it would require us to reduce some of our staff, not significant, I mean, not a lot, but just to pare it down. With our professional staff, we would reduce four positions at the school level, four teaching positions. And one of those teaching positions is a first-grade position. So it would also ask us to reduce one instructional assistant to align with that. And we do have the list of the schools. We have spoken with the principals and they know about the reduction, the recommended reduction there. That would be three hundred and seven, savings of three hundred seventy-two thousand, eight hundred seventy-four thousand dollars. So to sum this up, in the cost of these additional expenses, we know that the, the state right now in the governor's proposed budget, we anticipate that our funding from the state will increase by thirty-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars. We have, we propose that the total of these expenses is two, two million, nine hundred, ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. We are proposing to the board that we use the CARES, a combination of the CARES one and the CARES two dollars, which is one-time funding to cover these expenses. We are recommending to the board that we ask the city for level funding, no increase, zero in the increase of funding that we are receiving from the city. And with, that we use our CARES funding in order to respond to these expenses. Next slide. And here is how that breaks out. The, the net of the CARES one and two funding that's available to us is five million, three hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred fifty-nine dollars and nine cents. The FY twenty-two or the FY two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two proposed uses would be the general fund. After we subtract the thirty-two thousand that we anticipate getting from the state would be two million, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars, ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-six dollars that we use of, of the CARES one and two funding. COVID supplies, also a hundred thousand dollars from the CARES. Bringing forward two million, three hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars from the CARES funding that would remain. We would recommend that we use this one-time funding for the FY twenty-two budget. And then the carry-forward CARES funding that we use in the FY twenty-three budget. And perhaps there would be some remaining to help smooth out our transition back to dependence on the city in FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four. But we, we want to be clear that using CARES dollars is one-time funding for FY twenty-two. When we develop the FY twenty-three budget, we would have to start then asking the city to give us sustainable dollars, to allocate to a sustainable dollars for these items that are in the budget. Next slide. Ms. Powell, I'm gonna pitch it back over to you and then we'll start answering questions.
Sure, thank you. So yes, and by the way, you know, things like that six thousand dollar typo would mean that our carry forward to twenty twenty-three would, would, assuming everything else holds. And of course, we all know there's still other changes that could happen in this process, but it would be two million, three hundred and twenty thousand, eight, six hundred and ninety-three dollars that we would carry forward. But those are, you know, again, we're still, you know, only about midway through this process. So we all know that some additional tweaks may occur as we go along. But at least that six thousand is a nice round number, right? That we can make those adjustments easily in our heads at this point. So in the wrap-up, I think one of the first things that's, that's important or good to draw everyone's attention to is the, the city's Blue Ribbon Commission work that was done in twenty fourteen for sustainable school funding. And the, the key there is it was identified back in twenty fourteen that in order for the city to continue to work with the schools to provide the quality and variety and depth and breadth of programs that we provide, you could expect that it will take an additional appropriation each year of two to four million dollars. So keep that in mind. And then next slide, Leslie. Just to reiterate, a lot of the points that have already been made, but kind of tying it all together. The city additional appropriation for schools from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty ranged between one point five million and three point eight million additional year, year over year. The average annual increase from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty was two point three million. So I think that's important to just kind of recognize what the trend has been as far as the quote-unquote "normal" years we had prior to FY twenty-one during more, more normal times. That was the trend. Keep that in mind, keep that Blue Ribbon Commission report in mind. And always, always, we have to acknowledge that the city funding is the foundation and key for our programming and our services. It just simply is. So COVID nineteen has had significant and far-reaching impacts on our students emotionally, academically, and economically. And the staff have been working harder than ever to address the student needs in the midst of ever-changing challenges this year. So caution, and that word caution is in all caps for a reason. The proposed budget leverages one-time, non-recurring CARES funds to address the most pressing needs and allow time for the city revenues to cover, to recover and stabilize. It will be essential for the city to start providing additional allocations, starting in FY twenty twenty-three, to offset these proposed uses. Or, you know, ultimately, when you're dealing with one-time money, if the recurring funds in the operating budget don't come alongside and, and to level things out, there would be cuts to, to services required in future budgets. Hopefully, that will not happen. But, and any additional appropriation from the city for FY twenty twenty-two would start the process of reducing dependency on the one-time, non-recurring funds. But there, all, big thing to keep in mind is there's a reason we're not taking all this CARES two money and just, you know, using it in FY twenty twenty-two. Because we do need, I think it's important to provide a runway for the city's revenues to recover and stabilize. I think we just want to keep that in mind.
We'll add to that, that DOE and the, the federal side of the House, they are allowing us to spend, giving us a pretty long runway for spend-out for the CARES two dollars. So the spend-out runs to September twenty twenty-three. And that has helped us to structure this budget in this way.
And I believe, Dr. Atkins, the actual guidance that has come out so far with this is there, they do make reference to filling the gaps, so to speak, is that's a term that's actually used in the, in this, it's very, it's unusual. There's, there's a lot unusual about everything we're dealing with. But so often, money that comes to us with the federal government, from the federal government, comes with a lot of caveats and restrictions. These funds are different. And they actually acknowledge that one of the allowable uses is to fill the gap. And I think they're trying to allow for all communities time to recover while at the same time addressing the, the pressing needs and the important role that schools play in the recovery in, in all of our, in all of our communities.
When we started developing this budget a month ago, we were headed down a pathway to make significant cuts, given the economic landscape in our locality and at the state. It was Tuesday of this week that we were notified about the additional allocation of the CARES funding. And since Tuesday, staff and everyone has worked non-stop in order to shift our focus away from cutting to truly looking at what is it that, that we can do now to respond to the needs of our students and shift to more proactive than thinking about having to cut. So we're so grateful for the CARES funding and what it potentially will allow us to do. And Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you. And is that the last slide, Leslie?
The only other slide are the key dates to remind everyone, so we could take a glance. Just remember, our next big meeting is January the twenty-eighth. That's the joint session with council and the other dates are provided there for ready reference.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Madam Chair, we'll turn it back over to you and ask any questions.
Thank you. Thank, and again, I appreciate all the work. And, and especially considering how quickly we were able to pivot with this potential CARES money and, and looking at our budget differently. So I do appreciate that and I would look to our board members now to ask any questions they may have. And right now I am looking at Mr. Juan Diego Wade.
Yeah, I just had a clarification. I think it was three or four slides back. Is it possible to, 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 to go back a few slides? Leslie, I'm not sure who's, where it was the one where you were summarizing the revenue and changes, has only had a few numbers on it.
Through the federal revenue summary, it was just showing what CARES money would be available for FY twenty twenty-three based on the current proposal. And what you would need to do is take six thousand dollars away from the bottom line.
Leslie, the previous one from this one here, the slide that you're showing.
This one?
So, yes, so for this slide here, for the revenues, you, for the CARES is two point, roughly three million dollars. But way at the beginning, I commented something was like four point eight million. What's, what are we talking about? You may have said it, but what, this is CARES one or two, or what what's the difference there?
Sure, so basically, at this point, we're looking at CARES one and two funds as one sort of big bucket, if you will, for for purposes of budgeting. It's a, it's a bucket, and it's a question of how much are we going to take out to help for, you know, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two? And how much are we going to hold and save to help, you know, again, provide that runway for city revenue to hopefully recover? And and then address needs for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, which will be the next budget that we work together to develop. So the other, the funds, the portion of the CARES funding that's not shown here, the the two-point, the two point three million that's not shown here, that would be held in special revenues. So you would see it in the budget, but it would be almost in a a grant fund that would just kind of be frozen. We wouldn't plan to spend out of it. We would hope not to spend out of that, whatever's left remaining, and so that we could hold that over to work for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three budget. Renee, would you like to provide any additional comment on that? Because I know we've talked about it some, but would you do it back correct? Anywhere?
I I had to unmute, and, you know, fingers don't work as fast. The, there, there are two CARES buckets, and it's, we, we're referring to them as CARES one and CARES two. And so we'll spend first in, first out. And then what's remaining from the CARES two money, we will use in this budget and then carry over into FY twenty-three's budget. And we will park the money that we're gonna hold and reserve in special revenue fund as designated funds, just so we can budget it and have it in our budgets.
Okay. So, thank you, that answered that question. I had one, one more, Madam Chair, and that's concerning. You had mentioned that we're going to have some additional social workers in that support. I'm anticipating that in the fall, when the students come back, that we're going to need a lot more, you know, just overall mental health assistance for everyone, students, staff, and every, and we may have partnerships that we can help, that can help provide that. But I just, I just, nothing necessarily we have to budget, but we just have to maybe have to be prepared. It may be EAP, it may be, you know, reaching ten with our partners in the community, just kind of prepared for that, just, you know, because it's, it's, it would have been, you know, in some cases, over a year, you know, so.
It's the way we anticipate that that when we return face-to-face, it's going to be a joyous event, but it will be also be an emotional event. We, we consider ourselves a family, and families have their ups and downs, but when family has been separated for an entire year, when you come back together, there's going to be a celebration appropriately with with COVID in mind. But there will also be a release. It's going to be with our staff, our teachers, our students, and our families. Education is a a cornerstone in our community and in our Commonwealth and nation. And when we have not been able to access that in our traditional manner, we've, we've lost something. So now we will be able to come back, hopefully, March eighth, and then certainly in the fall and during the summer also. So we want to be prepared to respond to those emotional ups and downs that staff and students and and those kinds of releases that will happen once we come back together. We want to be prepared.
Dr. Atkins, the the way I've looked at it, and I think you and I had talked about it, Mr. Wade, just, you know, currently, we continue to hire for those five positions from that initial lump sum that we had, but potentially with these new positions, and I think this is exciting and and really important that we are potentially looking at four social workers in the high school, three at Beaufort, two at Walker, and one at each elementary school. So, and that's above and beyond other staff and support people that we already have in the building. So I think this is a great proposal and a great step in, in, you know, being ready to welcome those students back, so.
Could I just, since we're talking about mental health here, social workers, I just wanted to clarify the money that's coming from philanthropy, private philanthropy, and whether that is something that will be ongoing, or is that time-limited, something that we'll need to budget for, you know, after a certain period of time?
Whenever we receive grant funding, we always lock ahead to say, how can, if 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 the programs that we're putting in place provide a service for our students and our staff, how can we sustain that beyond the grant funding? First, we go back to the grantors and see if there is an opportunity for continuation of the grant. They've been generous. Perhaps there is an opportunity for continuation to sustain those programs and services. Then we start looking at our budget and this planning process and start to get a runway for how do we now incorporate those services and the cost of those services in our budget? So we're going to be looking to do that first to see if there's a possibility of renewing the grant. And then beyond that, depending on that response, how do we create a runway where we then incorporate that cost in our budget? We are funded for the rest of this school year. When we started the hiring, we have not hired all five of those social workers. So therefore, we have not used all of the funds, and it was only a fraction of the school year. Going into next year, we feel like we have the funding, and I'm looking at Renee, we have the funding to sustain those five positions during next year. If we need to pull on a little of the CARES dollars to fill any holes that might exist with that, we'll do that to sustain it for the upcoming school year. And we'll be in conversation with our donor and representatives to see what that run may way might look like beyond next year.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Derry, since you started.
Oh.
Want to continue?
Well, I just had a couple of things. First of all, I just want to say that I I'm really pleased with what I'm seeing with the work that you all have done to develop this budget. And so I, you know, I'm very happy with it, and I'm sure that the city will be happy with it, too, city council. I wanted to just ask specifically about this, going back to this, the Autism Stars program at Beaufort and Walker. I was wondering how many students are involved in that program? How, I mean, roughly, how many students are served through those services?
Well, I can tell you at Walker, after having a conversation yesterday with Dr. Hastings, he had four students at Walker in the Stars program, and those stu- four students are moving up to Beaufort. And he anticipates that he will have a number of other students that could be coming into the program next year. Dr. King, do you want to add to that?
Yes, and next year, Beaufort will have seven students that will receive support from the Star program.
Beaufort will, and, and then we're not sure about Walker yet. We don't know exactly what the enrollment there will be for students who qualify. But that's, you know, I'm just wondering, it sounds like it's a.
It's seven for next, for next school year.
Okay, okay.
And my understanding is that we did not have a Stars designated instructor there at Walker, correct?
That is correct. They did a realignment of their special education teachers to provide the support through this school year. And this budget proposal provides an opportunity to not only have a Star program at our elementary, but then to Walker, then to Beaufort, as our students move up. So we are expanding our continuum of services for students identified with autism.
Great. Yeah. And I just, this is just a comment, or, you know, a suggestion that as we are working with the city in our upcoming meetings and going forward, it seems to me that it would be an appropriate time to suggest a new Blue Ribbon Commission or some color ribbon commission to really take a look at the sustainable school funding again. Because I know that, you know, Kim always shows us that, that little chart that shows the, you know, the, the, where Charlottesville is and various types of spending, and education is sort of below the state average, and it seems like it might be an appropriate time to just, you know, and as the city begins to stabilize itself and its leadership, that that might be a a component to suggest going forward, especially as we're, you know, taking a look at some new, new school buildings and reconfiguration and all that, it might be an appropriate time to suggest that. And that's all I have right now.
Dr. Craft, the appropriate time to do that could be at at our city council school board luncheon.
Yeah, that's why I'm bringing it up today.
Thank you.
So do you want to do that? Will you do that? Do you want to suggest that?
I just, I would like to just add something there that y- you cannot imagine the difficulty that we had in in that Blue Ribbon Test, was like coming to consensus around it. It was unbelievably challenging, and given the challenges that the city council is currently having, I'm not sure that that's the best time for it. And it might be just very helpful to educate our new city manager in what has happened in the past, and then wait a little bit to recommend a Blue Ribbon Commission or a new one, because strategically, I'm not sure that the city council is in the right position yet. So I think that's a good long-term, but I'm not sure that in the short term, we need to be offering that as a suggestion, because again, just the challenges initially of coming together around that committee were, it was dramatic, as you recall, Dr. Atkins. But I, so I, and and given just some of the challenges at the city level, I think our best resources need to be focused on educating our current city manager or the coming, the city manager that's coming in.
Yeah, that that APA report is a very interesting comparative report, and it's, it's important to just understand what it means. It means that per citizen, when you compare for the dollars per citizen, if you will, what's going into the different functional areas, it it does reflect it, just different choices relative to the statewide average as far as how other communities divvy up their available resources. And and so it is, and it's, it just reflects perhaps some different choices. And and I think even, because really, when you look at the twenty-fourteen Blue Rib- Blue Ribbon Commission and the dollar range that it sets forward as what would be, you know, sufficient to sustain this, the programs and so forth, we haven't actually gone beyond, I think, still that dollar range that it puts forth, the two to three million or whatever, you know, we're still, year over year, that, that is, that, that dollar figure, dollar range is still holding true. So I think that APA report that you referenced, Dr. Craft, is, is sort of where, just having conversations around that alone, and what does that mean? And and is that, you know, is that what the community, is that what it should be? I don't know, you know, that's, that, I'm not commenting whether it's right or wrong, but I think it just brings up an interesting conversation. And so then to Jennifer McKeever, Ms. McKeever's point, just that conversation alone could be fruitful at this point, maybe.
Yeah, I know, I think everything starts with good conversation, and I think, you know, with a new person coming in, I I think it's really, it is vital that, you know, that that, you know, the new city manager have an understanding of where we are and where we've been and how we compare with other cities and counties and the state. And then where that goes from there, we'll see, it's a new era. But I, I think that I want to keep the conversation in the forefront of their minds. Because I do say, I think we're behind. I I just think, you know, this is a community with so many resources, but I think we need to take some big leaps here, you know, educationally. And I just want to make sure that they, you know, that that's understood.
Just keep in mind always that that chart is not about, is not really a good one to think about in terms of absolute dollars, but in terms of choices of allocations from within the available resources, if that makes sense. Because, because people will quickly go, well, Charlottesville's per pupil funding is, you know, is not low compared to the rest of the Commonwealth. And so you just have to be kind of prepared to understand how that relates to what you're actually seeing in that chart. It's really, that chart is showing just choices at the local level about the allocation of available funds.
Thank you, Dr. Craft, do you have any other questions or comments right now?
No, I'm good right now, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McKeever, are you ready?
Yes, thank you so much. I really do appreciate much of what, I mean, honestly, you can't argue with any of these choices with, that you have, you know, maybe recommended here in terms of increases, except for more, right? I mean, that's, that would be great, but I I fully understand the res- reserving the remaining CARES fund for, to to try to ease the burden on local taxpayers coming in the following year. I just think that's a really savvy way to look at it, because, you know, honestly, my, you know, asking for three million dollars next year on top of no doubt what will be at least three million dollars next year is going, is a lot. So just kind of stepping that, making that kind of a ladder approach is a good idea. So thank you for just being really strategic in that approach. So I have several, you know, as you might imagine, comments or questions. One is, so the governor has been emphasizing year-round school as a potential way to, you know, ease and bring children back up to grade level after this year, which I'm really looking at as like an opportunity, as I've told you multiple times in our conversations here at the school board and privately, I think we have a real opportunity to kind of reinvent what school is and just provide that flexibility for students that they're, and just provide for students' needs much more directly than maybe we have in the past. And I was wondering, A, where we are on year-round school, just to start with.
It's a good question, Ms. McKeever. You know, I embrace year-round schools. The KIP model, that I think I remember the first person talking with me about the KIP model was Mr. Wade. And he, he wanted to know how might we replicate that? And that is a year-round, longer school day, longer school year model. And I think if we go back to really digging into achievement gaps, achievement gaps start first with opportunity gaps. And one of the gaps in the opportunity is access to rigorous curriculum and time on task. Year-round schools responds to students having opportunities to be on task. So we have had conversations, we do still have the planning grant for year-round schools, and we also talked with some of our teachers and staff and PTO from two of our schools, Jackson Byer and Clark, about their interest in year-round schools. So we we pause that conversation right now, because our teachers are in the virtual environment, and and trying to ask them to peel off some brain time to give to how we might plan for year-round schools is a challenge for them. And it it adds to what they're already doing. In order to adequately plan for year-round schools, I would like to recommend that the board give us time to convene a group of our stakeholders in a meaningful way, our teachers and our, our parents, so that we can plan what a year-round school calendar might look like. We put forth extending our school day, that's one of the models that we wanted to embrace with year-round schools. So we still have the conversation. So we still have the conversation. We want to continue it, but we paused a moment to allow our teachers just to give their full attention right now on virtual. But at any moment, we can resume that. We do have the Freedom School that we piloted last year during the summer. It is our intent to continue that program this summer also. So that gives some of the, the caveats of year round school for our teach, our students. So I, I hope that gives you.
I guess I just, yeah, that's very helpful. I, I think, I think more broadly about year round school. Like I don't want, I feel like extended day, as you and I have discussed again numerous times, like I'm, I have been reluctant to embrace extended day in any meaningful way. I, I think after school is a critical component to a student's life. And, but I am willing and because of families' needs, like I just think we could all have this really interesting, unique conversation, not just with students. I'm sorry, not with, just with teachers, but stakeholders being like the whole community, business leaders, parents, you know, bus drivers, there's just a lot of stakeholders that could potentially be brought to the table to talk about what school should and can do for students and families in our community. So like I have this idea that is not based at all in any reality, but it's like, these are just kind of the ideas that you can throw at the wall and see if it could, could do, you know, flesh out and see what works. And one of them is, for example, like, I'm like, well, if I could do nine to five, like we're in COVID, right? We do Monday through Thursday synchronous school and Friday is planning time. And finally, teachers feel like they have enough planning time. And I'm like, okay, well, if we could do nine to five, Monday through Thursday, and then have, have Friday as a planning day, you know, these are good, nothing that I'm suggesting that we do, but just like ideas that we could just throw out there and then you could have basically an extra day of the week, whatever. There's just a lot of things there. I'm not suggesting we do it, but there's a lot of ideas out there. And I want to really promote creativity about what school looks like. And that's why this budget, while excellent in terms of what we have been doing, I feel like does not really, I mean, except for with mental health, I think it's really innovative. And, but I feel like it doesn't actually try to tweak or alter what we've been doing, things that aren't serving our kids. What we have found or learned any, we haven't really taken some of the lessons that we're learning, we're learning as we go in virtual, the virtual environment and, and, and putting it in next year's budget. Maybe I'm wrong. That might be an overstatement. But the mental health piece is really innovative. So my point is, I think a broader commute, like a blue ribbon commission on schools, on reinventing schools would be helpful or not reinventing, but like year round or whatever it is that we want to talk about moving forward. So I'm going to move on from that.
Ms. McKeever, I do want to comment on that. I, I think you make an excellent point. We have learned so much during this virtual world. And I think one of the things in being fully transparent, one of the things that we must grapple with, our teachers have transitioned to virtual learning in our students. And there are a number of students who are thriving in the virtual environment. There are a number of teachers who are thriving in the virtual environment. That's how they teach best. And it has allowed some of our teachers to balance their personal life with their work life. It has given them some flexibilities that when you're face to face in the building that they did not have. Families have flexibilities now that they did not have when, when their student was in the building. I think there are some real gems that we can get out of the virtual environment and what we've learned from this. Ideally, I would love to have a committee that takes a look at that to hear voices from our community, our families, our teachers, our stakeholders. How might we move into the new school year? And have differentiated learning platforms or differentiated learning. I don't know that it can happen, so I don't want to put anything out there to frighten anyone. But what I do know is that our teachers have learned a lot and our teachers have been incredibly good with this. And there are some students, well, virtual learning doesn't work for, but there are also a number of students that if we get really creative, I hope we could just open up public education in a whole new way. Now, it would be a risk to have those kinds of conversations because there are pros and cons and there are all sorts. And it would take all of us pulling together to do it. But I, I would, I would embrace it in order to move our teachers to where they want to be and our families to where they want to be.
I mean, it's really helpful because I think we don't really know where we are, where we want to be as a community. And so to have a conversation, I think we have an opportu, like people say, well, are we going to go back to the before times? And I'm like, I feel like there's so many things about the before times that we could really be done with and we could just move on. And like, I don't know about you, and I've just mentioned this before, but like, you know, when my, when you look at the screen for the kids and zoom, everybody's got their blankets and their stuffies and their dog. And I mean, there's just things, even this is a horrible situation. Nobody wanted this, but there are things that we can learn. And I think we can make the investment of time to talk about what we should take with us after this time.
We've talked a lot about attracting more people to the profession. We attract more people to the profession by affecting the culture. And a part of that culture is moving public education into the 22nd century, not just the 21st century. And technology is where we are and harnessing that and helping give as much flexibility as we can. And, and I, I'll use your word creativity with our teachers and how we deliver instruct. When we look at our high school model, that is just, well, high school, can you get any better than that? For those students that it works for and for the teachers that it worked for, can you get any better than that? I just cheer every day because that model for the students that it works for and teachers is just revolutionary and in our elementary schools also.
So I mean, maybe you and Ms. Torres can work on, you know, what, what that committee could do. And then, you know, I'm sure this board would be happy to talk about it more, you know, as we, if we want to develop such a thing. So I don't mean to speak for the board, like I just want to, I definitely think we should take stock.
Ms. McKeever, I, I really appreciate your, you know, your vision and your thoughts on this. And, and you too, Dr. Atkins, and, and I, I look forward to it. I think this is a prime time and that we don't want to lose this opportunity because we are in it. And I think there are a lot of people who would be really interested to, to bring their ideas. So thank you for bringing that up. Any other questions or comments right now from you?
Yes. Sorry, that was a little segue, but um, so let's see here. So compared to, again, I feel like the stipend model for the lead teachers and I think there's also like PLC leads. Like there's a bunch of, it's just really hard to know if we're, if that, we're being fair to the teacher, like to teach. Because like, if I did math, I did math. And I like did a quick division on like, okay, if they worked one extra hour a day as a lead teacher, which I'm sure is a incredibly conservative estimate of what we're actually asking them to do. Like if it was like 160 hours in the year, it was, you know, it's like $9 an hour or something. And I know that that's like a, not an ideal way of doing it. We don't do that with coaches, like coaches get a stipend and it's, they certainly work more than what, very significantly more. So I just, I don't want people to have to work for free or, or feel like they're not being paid for what they're doing. And I think that my goal as a school board member is to, you know, get people who want to work and pay them for that work. And I think that's professional. And I think you guys are trying to do that, but I want that with the summer curriculum people and the content developers. I just, it's just a lot of work and I want it to be, I want them to feel like they are in fact, you know, being professional and getting paid for it. Adding to their professional and getting paid for it. So I, I, again, in these, in this like context of this chart, it's really hard to kind of understand the big picture. So maybe this is like something next year or like in eight months, we can talk more about like the pay structure for teachers and the pay structure for, I don't know, and see like what a, you know, because again, I was thinking like, if teachers are doing year round school, for example, they're getting $60,000 a year is, you know, I think a great place to start. You know, like that would be a great way to kind of get the city to invest in $60,000 a year for teachers. It's like, oh, we have year round school, but I want them to actually get paid more, right? I mean, that's, you're working 60, you know, year round, then you're. So my goal again is to get teachers much more appreciated and respected as a profession. And I think these stipends are a good start, but I think like, I'd love to have a broader conversation about pay scales for teachers and like their contract day compared to what they're actually doing. I think that there's always a lot more there. So there's no question there. Sorry. And then well, I was wondering if we could have a plan for the social workers, like what their job description would be. That's where I get, I'm going to need to defend this to city council and to taxpayers as like, okay, we need to make these investments. And on the face of it, it absolutely makes sense, right? Like nobody's going to argue with that, especially coming out of COVID and especially since we have the CARES money, who's going to support it. But once we have to ask for, I don't know, 1.1 million dollars from the city to pay for 12 or 11 and a half, 12 and a half social workers, we're going to need metrics that identify how and what they've been doing. And it's not going to just be like, oh, they've, one student, you know, we're going to need actual data to support $1 million investment in the social workers in five years, right? I mean, that's really what I'm looking at, long-term investment in social workers is going to require metrics. So I would love to see what, what you all are thinking about that.
Ms. McKeever, we have been talking about that and been in collaboration with Jody Murphy and Patrick Farrell and some of our community partners. They are in contact with them. So we'll bring back a report to the board around those, those topics for you.
And I think, you know, I don't, like I wanted a 4% increase last year, so 2% increase is like not enough. But this is where we are. So.
I'm on, on your side with that. I would take direction from the board. I mean, we have given 5% salary increases. Our goal, our strategic goal and to bring our teachers up to market value is a worthwhile goal. It is the goal we should have. And I would, I would embrace any recommendation that the board would make. I would like to give our teachers a 10% salary increase. I don't think that would be enough.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, but I would love that as well. But I, so if we could, so I was doing my math, which is always dangerous again. So it was like 1.107 to do an average of 2% increase for all three of the categories that you've identified. Does that reflect all of the staff? Is there anybody being left out of this?
There are only one person.
You?
Yes. It's appropriate. I mean, that's no, not, should not be included, but it does include all of the staff other than the superintendent.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, great. So, you know, I, I welcome the direction of the board. I would love to see a better than 2% increase. So if we do a step today, a step this year, because we did not do a step last year. Is that accurate?
That is correct. Yes.
I mean, we got to do at least two steps.
We'll bring that back to the board.
Okay. I mean, I mean, that's just the minimum. I mean, you gotta, like, I want to bring everybody back to where they should be at a minimum. And then we can talk about percent increase on top of that, 0.75, 1%, something like that. I would welcome a range, but also welcome the input of the other school board members. I'm sure I have other questions and thoughts, but like summer school investments, I would love to see too.
It would probably bring us close to $500,000, $600,000.
More. Which I think is kind of something we could absorb in the CARES money and then ask for $500,000 more next year from city council. You know, like I think that's what we're talking about, right? I mean, it's basically moving money, more money to today from, but really what we're doing is trying to bring people back from last year, which I think was what the CARES money is supposed to be doing. And then easing the transition for our local taxpayers for next year, but not at the highest rate possible. But more accurate because it's, so that's my humble suggestion is we do at least two steps or bring people up to where they should be based on not having a raise, any raise last year. And then I would ask for at least a minimum of 1%.
So Ms. McKeever, two steps would be, and I think I'm, Kim and Renee, it would be around 3.25% increase.
Okay. So then we could do another 0.75 on top of that, so that it would kind of make an average of 4%.
Let us bring back some, estimated cost to the board.
That would be 2.2 at least, and that would be more than a half a million dollars. But again, we're asked a lot of our teachers, they're going to, we're still going to be asking a lot of them from, for the next, well, forever. So, and staff, so I would welcome a 4% increase. That's all I have to say, Ms. Torres. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, fully support that, Ms. McKeever. But again, my, my caution and concern, and I would love to have more, I guess, in-depth explanation, Dr. Atkins, from you and your team on, on just the structure and how you had described to me as far as, you know, the, the money that we're going to hold over and, and how that might impact what we're asking for from city council in the next year or two, you know, just wanting to be cautious with that, but fully support what you are recommending, Ms. McKeever. We will go, let me see who I see next. If anybody wants to raise their hand, LaShonda, I see you raising, waving. Ms. Bryce and Worsberger, why don't you jump in?
Thank you. Let me get my pages straight. I have a few questions. Okay. So we've been talking about the social workers and I just want to know what is the funding or the increase for the current counselors that we have at the schools? I'm thinking particularly about the high school counselors because at our last budget meeting, we talked a lot about people slipping behind or students slipping behind in the high school as far as graduation is concerned. So I was just wondering, because we've been talking a lot about the social workers, are they going to be providing support for the high school counselors and for students as far as the, the academic side and graduation and college prep to get them where they need to be on time?
And Ms. Bryce and Worsberger will be more than happy to bring you a detailed response to that question. Are you referring to counselors as our, our guidance counselors?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Counselors, but also the guidance counselors, but also just even at the elementary school, the, the counselors that we have for them. So we have the social workers coming in and Ms. McKeever was talking about this a little bit. Just wondering, are they providing support for our current counselors? Do they have a separate set of duties? But I just wanted to make sure that the high school, the secondary counselors are being supported since that graduation and college readiness is going to be. since that graduation and college readiness is going to be, you know, one of the first things we kind of see COVID affecting this year.
Yes, we'll bring back a full report on the responsibilities, duties and responsibilities. The intent is that there would be a coordination of services and that, that both the counselors and the social workers will be working together. But the social workers will have a distinct role with our students, different from the role that the counselor has.
Okay. And so are the, that increase that we were talking about before, does it, it includes the counselors? Teachers and staff counselors?
Salary increase? Yes, ma'am, it does. It includes support staff, includes teachers. Yes, it does.
Okay. Because from my understanding, has been explained to me, I was particularly thinking about the high school counselors since they're responsible for input on that master schedule and for a lot of the, a lot of things that have been affected by COVID, which might be a little bit more intense at that higher level. So we can follow back up with that. Thanks. And then the second question is for both the IA, for the IAs that we're bringing back. So that makes us whole from last year when we cut the instructional assistance?
Yes, it does.
They're all back? Okay.
Yes.
And then the Greenbrier increase of the reading specialist, I think, is that to put them on par with the other elementary schools? Or is there an increased need there or did they lose a position?
It's a combination of the two. Greenbrier has more need in their school. They have, we've added ESL, ESL teacher at Greenbrier. They need some additional support. So this reading specialist will provide that additional support that they need.
Okay. And then particularly for the, the cuts, the first grade cut, teacher cuts and the IA that would go along with that. I understand that enrollment is going to be down, but from all the indicators, it seems like we're going to need, kids are going to need more support when they come back. So is there any way to keep those positions? And then those first grade teachers could either provide like smaller classrooms or support, you know, where kids are falling behind because there's been a lot of talk about virtual education for like kindergarteners, preschoolers, like that's their first experience with school. So they're going to be a little, you know, further, they're going to need more time to catch up. We can't use those positions and keep them since, by all indications, kids are going to need more support and more attention?
Thank you, Ms. Bryson Morrisburger.
Hi, Ms. Powell. So we do have the two, I guess, well, it's always the pleasure of the board, what you want to do with class sizes. But if you look at the information in the appendix, you know, if we don't continually evaluate our staffing in relation to our enrollment, you'll, you can end up with some really low class sizes. I don't know any other way to put it. But we do, if we were to take out those positions, and I say take out loosely, ever since I've been here, these types of things have always been addressed by attrition and retirements. So it's not like we, for these typical adjustments, we have not had to, you know, do a reduction in force previously, at least since I have been here. It's been my experience because we have a fair amount of attrition and retirements. But we do have two open positions in the budget for enroll. We, they're also called open positions for enrollment, but they're positions that we hold to go where most needed. So if there were something that were off in, in the, in the projections and we needed to bring a teacher, you know, to bear, bring, bring one back into the budget, we could, you know, hire one, the, the funds are there for at least the two to add back in. But without removing, you know, without making these adjustments as we go, you end up with class sizes of, you know, potentially as low as, you know, 12 students, 10 students, or just some very low numbers. But, and that's not a bad thing, right? But at the same time, is that something that we want to fund in relation to all the other priorities? Because again, remember the decisions that we make with regard to salary action, positions, all of these things now will lean heavily into the CARES money. And the more we lean heavily into the CARES money for fiscal year 2022, the more we shorten that runway of expectation for the city's revenues to recover, to be able to, you know, backfill and, and support these, these great things we're trying to do with this budget to, to support the continuation of those things. But it's certainly the board's choice.
How many of those positions will be, will, will lose through retirement or attrition? And is attrition them just deciding voluntarily?
Deciding to leave, yeah. Attrition refers to them just deciding to leave.
How many of those cut positions are attrition or retirement?
We, we can't say at this point, but I can say, you know, it's in the past, historically, there's always more than enough retirement and attrition where we haven't, have not had to do reduction in force. I'm just speaking to the experience I've had so far. Dr. Hubbard, we, we haven't even reached the deadline yet for people. It's not really a deadline, but we do provide an incentive for people to notify us that they're going to retire by the end of January. When that hasn't gotten to, we haven't reached that point yet. But Dr. Hubbard, I believe I heard at one point we were getting intention to retire notices at a pretty good clip. True or false? I may have, I may be imagining that.
No, that, that's true. We, we've been getting a few more requests than we have typically in years prior. I, I don't have the data to say if it's in one position or another, but there has been more people to come in to seek the counseling as far as where would they be if they were to retire. So we'll, we'll keep up with that data and be able to share that information. I don't have specific numbers yet, but we, we have had more interest this year than has been in the, in the years past at this time. So I'm saying in relative, in relative to this time, it's higher than it has been in previous years.
And I thought I had overheard that from the HR team when I was in the office. So, but we can never tell, to be really honest, Ms. Morrisburger, we, we never know at this point for sure exactly how all that will play out. Because we just simply don't know everyone's intentions with regard to retirement or just to leave or go elsewhere, whatever. It's, it unfolds throughout the year and definitely throughout the spring. You know, new, new information comes to HR all the time. And then if we have identified what our actions are going to be in relation to the enrollment projections, then as we become aware of individuals' intentions, we, you know, we can bring those, those things together and, and plan accordingly.
And we are in the process of collecting that information now. The intent surveys went out to all staff members this past Friday. So they have till the 29th to complete that information. And so we'll have a, we'll start getting a clearer picture as the year continues to progress.
Okay. So for the, as we, at each budget meeting, when we're talking about these positions that are on here to be cut, if there will be balanced out through the attrition and retirement, can you let us know if, you know, you have the information at that time? And thank, thank you. So I'm just talking about those positions because I'm hesitant to, I, we have a large budget and I know a lot of it is, you know, things we can't change, like benefits and salaries and things like that. But we're talking about equity, we're talking about kids slipping behind and we're cutting face-to-face positions. And so I know, like, you know, it seems like to me for equity, if we're talking about it, maybe some classes being 14 kids in a class will address some inequity. So I just, I'm not comfortable cutting people face-to-face with students if there's a, a better, if there's a way we can go bold, reimagine from, you know, how we're doing now as opposed to the before times, because, you know, kids are going to need that additional support. So maybe we can talk about it in future budget meetings this cycle. I'm still moving down the list. Oh, and this is a side question. Why are the preschools being housed at the First Methodist Church? Or the United, First United Methodist?
They aren't at this time. And forgive me, I was actually trying to answer a question in the chat when that discussion was going on earlier. So I'm not exactly sure what was, but we considered that and we were working to possibly have that as an option during some of the earlier planning phases when we were looking at what it would take to get more of our elementary students back in the building and maintain social distancing. We were looking for how to just get more space to make the plans work. And so earlier on, that was something that we, that, you know, had, was, were working out just as an option.
Okay. Okay. So the, so all of our preschools are, that are in or have some level of face-to-face, whether it's because special needs or something, you know, where we're allowing people back in the building, they're in our buildings?
Those are the current plans, correct? And unless something were done to accelerate the number of students who would be coming back into our elementary schools and if the current, you know, restrictions or guidelines are in there for, for spacing and social distancing, it would only be under that combination of circumstances that we would look again to see if we needed to use outside, you know, additional spaces that aren't part of our CCS school buildings. But that would be, it would take that set of circumstances to cause us to look outside for additional space again. We just appreciated that there was a partner in the community who was willing to help us in a meaningful way, try to, you know, find additional space. But that's become less of a, a need at this point, given our current plans.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then there's an increase in the pupil transportation of 140,000. And so I'm just wondering, I know we talked about doing a contract because we were short staffed drivers. So doing a contract to like split the difference. So I'm just wondering, I don't know how far we are in the contract or how many drivers were short at this time. But when we have open positions and they don't get filled, what happens to the money for those positions that fiscal year? So if we don't fill three or four positions, where does all that money go?
Good questions and I'm not sure that I'll be able to answer them at the, with the level of detail and certainty that I would like to, because it's not a budget that I directly manage. But I can tell you that the, the process with the city getting the contract drivers on board has, has stalled. They haven't seen, it was very challenging to begin with. There weren't a lot of options. And, but we've been pressing with our colleagues at the city to try to keep that position moving forward with the one option they felt they had remaining. But that $140,000 increase that you see is actually not tied to contract drivers for next year. It's mainly driven by a combination of lost revenue, actually, because they're recognizing that they're not, as of this time, they're, they're not at, they don't anticipate having any revenue from charters and field trips. So that was part of what was reflected in their, their request. At the top of the sheet, it does have some compensation actions. What happens in part when they don't fill positions is something that we also experience sometimes is they have to pay more in hourly wages. So they'll be paying less in there with salaries, but they'll be paying more with our hourly. And certainly if the contracting thing can ever get going, they, they would be potentially paying more with contracting drivers. But, and then there was some funds in there for, in their initial request for getting back on track with bus replacements. But I've been questioning that part because a lot of our buses aren't rolling at any given time because of the driver shortage. So I wondered if we could back that off again, and we're talking about that. But from the initial request that we received, the number that's on the actual budget proposal is a reduced number by about 50 some thousand dollars. And because we just had some, we had some, we did, I wouldn't say we had a ton of time to go back and forth about it, but that's what we negotiated it down to. And I do know our transportation department has a lot of needs and they're facing a lot of challenges. So, and also
Can we also give a little bit of background on how, about the management of that budget that, that Charlottesville City actually transfers? Give a little bit of
Right. We don't, so that's what I was saying earlier. I don't, we just, they give us a, a total for the contract. And they do, they, in the last two years, they have provided a supporting spreadsheet that shows where they think the changes are occurring that lead to that bottom line request. And we have some back and forth around that. And then, you know, again, we've taken the number that we've put into the budget here is what we think is a good faith, best estimate of what's really substantiated. And, and it is a little less than what they have asked for as an increase. But we don't actually manage that operation or the details of that budget. And that's what I was saying earlier. Right? So I, I can only comment based on what I see on the spreadsheet that they've sent over with their budget request. But that budget's not under our direct management. There was something else I was going to say and it slipped my mind. But if it comes up again and if it's, if I feel like it's valuable, I'll try to share. What was it? Oh. They also, when they have salary savings, I alluded to this before, but if they have savings and payroll, sometimes other things crop up that will take those funds. And I know for a fact, one of those things is contracting for drivers and for drop, for services for transporting special needs students. That's also something where the money shifts. So just because they don't have the positions filled, doesn't mean that they still have to provide the services. And so whether they're providing that services by paying their existing drivers overtime, paying additional wages to CAT drivers to jump over and work in pupil or contracting out, which is something that even though we wanted potentially or may need to do more of that for our regular transportation, contracting for some of the special needs transportation has always been part of our overall transportation solution. And sometimes we have to lean, the fewer drivers we have, the more heavily we have to lean into contracting for the special needs transportation.
Okay. Thank you. And I know we've talked about this some before. I remember I was at a budget meeting with the city council or joint one. And I was just asking like, where does the money go that we're not spending on fuel? Because, you know, we are running some routes, but it's not the same. And so I remember then they were saying like, as far as city contracts go with the school, if, you know, we go a little over, they just maintain what we gave them and they find the difference. But if we go a little under, then they keep the difference for the off years. And so I still, that might be a larger city issue about how, how we show where our money is going. So I understand for that part. But is there any, like, even with teachers, like when we don't, or substitutes, when we don't fill a position, does the money just carry over to the next year? Like, instead of having the funding for two years with, one year with that teacher, now we have two years because we never hire. I'm just wondering, does everything just zero out? Or does the money carry over when we don't, we have salaries set aside for a particular position that we don't fill?
Sure. So open position money does, is a, is a fact of all of our budgets, whether it's the city's budget or our budget is, it is part of what happens. Because as much as we would like to say that, you know, we know exactly what's going to happen year to year, we have no more ability to do that with an $80 million budget than you do with your household budget, knowing exactly what's going to happen and exactly where the money is going to have to go. So, you know, unforeseen circumstances come up and some things that, there are always things that are costing more than we projected. And then that, that open position savings, first and foremost, goes towards covering those things. We don't even know, when we hire people, sometimes usually you're going to hire someone that's lower on the scale than what you had before, but that doesn't always happen. So sometimes you actually end up spending more for the same position one year than you did the prior because you were able to perhaps hire someone with more experience when you replaced the, the position when it was vacated. So there's all these moving parts. And to summarize, yes, it ends up being part of the year-end funds. And we come to you every year and the fund balance, it will either increase or decrease based on, you know, what happens in any given year with the year-end settlement of the budget. And so the fund balance is where you see that, that ultimate reconciliation of the, of the overs and the unders, if you will. It plays out into the, well, into two places, actually. We do have a, a year-end process we go through with the city for how we divvy up any excess money. And then whatever, and then the outcome of that process is what happens with the fund balance that does carry into the next year.
You're on mute, LaShandra.
Sorry. What's our balance? I'm sure you said it before. I just can't find it on my page. What's our balance coming into this school year from that?
Great question. Renee, could you please, because I know you probably have that top of mind and I don't have it handy? Seven something in it, our fund balance?
It, it is about 770,000.
Coming into this year, right?
The fiscal year 2021.
Is that higher or lower than usual? Like, is that a good, what's the average? Is there like, is that high for a year or is that low for a year?
That's about average, but best practices. Renee, tell us about best practices for fund balance.
Uh, best practices for a fund balance is to have at least twelve percent of your expenditures. Uh, and, and for Charlottesville city schools, that would be well over a, a million, uh, some dollars. So we, we are, um, not there. We should have enough, uh, fund balance to cover at least three months of expenditures. Uh, if all of our funding stopped coming in. So, no, we're, we're, we don't have enough fund balance to cover all that.
Ms. Bryson Moersberger, uh, we have a gain sharing agreement at the end of each year. Kim, you wanna explain that, uh, how that operates?
Sure, so the way the gain share works is that the first hundred thousand dollars that would be remaining, Renee, correct me if I'm saying any of this wrong, because I haven't looked, it's not top of mind. But the first hundred thousand goes into the school's capital improvements fund. Um, and so that's the first hundred thousand and that's the, the, the school CIP with, with the city. So that money is held on the city side. And then the next, um, hundred thousand is divided equally between the schools and the city. And then after that, if there, if we, if we have as much as three hundred thousand dollars left, anything of, after that first two hundred thousand, the schools are allowed to keep in our fund balance. Is that correct, Renee?
Um, I was with you at the first, the first hundred thousand, anything a hundred thousand allowed, the school is allowed to keep in their fund balance.
Okay.
Greater than a hundred thousand dollars, we split fifty fifty with the city, between the city and the schools.
So Ms. Bryson Moersberger, the seven hundred thousand dollars is in the fund balance is the accruing of that over several years. It's not from one year, but it's over multiple years that we accrue that. And then when we, um, have to allocate some of that money, uh, we come back to the board to ask the board our permission to allocate that money, and usually it's for a one-time expense or to cover a gap that we might have.
And thank you for correcting me, Renee. I forgot. I was confusing that with the days when we used to make that hundred thousand dollar contribution to small cap at the, the year-end funds, and we no longer do that. We do that upfront in the budget now. So thank you for that, that correction.
Okay, and then my last question is just to understand, um, the funding, um, because we're always looking at the increase and decrease from next year or for this upcoming year. Is there a place where I can go to see for our expenditures? We have contract services, ten million, internal services, fifty-nine thousand, uh, other charges, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand. Where's the detailed accounting of what that is spent on?
So, um, as far as knowing exactly what's in those categories, you'd have to follow most of the records to see at the level of detail, at the lowest level of detail. You, you look at our purchasing records and I believe you, you all see the check registers. You have access to some of that information each month or you see purchasing information. But Renee, do you wanna comment from the budget burst book perspective as to where to see the, the details?
Um, yeah, and, and our current budget, we, uh, identify our contract services, uh, which is one of our, our largest, uh, dollar sums that we expend is on page sixty-eight and page sixty-nine, where we talk about, um, the city of Charlottesville, the city maintenance contract, which is about three point, um, five million dollars, three point eight million dollars. And then our transportation, uh, contract, which is two point eight million. Uh, our comprehensive services act, uh, contract with the city is six hundred and sixteen thousand. And then our work source, uh, enterprise, uh, contract is a hundred and fifteen thousand. That's where we go into, uh, description of those. And then we outline the payments that we pay to our joint operations, which is K-TAC, uh, for about five part, seventy-eight thousand. And then our Piedmont education or regional program, we pay them about a, a million, eight hundred and nine thousand. So that outlines, uh, some of our significant expenditures.
Okay, I, I mean, maybe you can, I can hear you. Maybe you could send it to me because I'm looking, I'm just referring to like the budget book from last year. And so like, I'm just on a page where it shows you just the funds, like, you know, those big number items. But I just don't see where it's broken down into where it goes. So maybe I'm looking at the, the wrong page in this book. But yeah, that would be helpful just to know where it's broken down. So if someone would be nice enough to send it to me, that would be lovely, because I am not finding it in the, in the current.
I'd be happy to send that to you.
I'm looking at this page and I see like the big breakdown and I just don't know where I go to see the smaller breakdown.
Ms. Mo- uh, Bryson Moersberger, some of those, um, transfer dollars like to, uh, our Piedmont Regional Education Program. We transfer that as a lump sum, and then it goes into their budget. And the details of that is housed in their budget. Um, so, but we'll give you all of that information and then that may prompt some additional questions that you have.
Okay, okay. I think those were all my questions, Renee.
And some of those things, like when it comes to something like an object code three thousand, which anything with that in our coding scheme, some of those dollars are spent at the division level, but some of them are also spent at the school level and the department level. You know, it, there's all, the expenses are rolling up for purchase services from every school and program. So there's the, Renee listed off some of the really biggies, that the big ones tend to come out of the division budget. But then all of the smaller purchase services and contract services, those are, those expenses originate from every department and school in the division.
Well, I mean, so, yeah, maybe I'm looking at the wrong page. But like, for example, when we're talking about the supplies, I believe, materials and supplies, it's four point six million in our budget on that last year's budget on the sheet. But in this, today we're going over it and there's a specific allotment for K through twelve science. And so I guess I would just like to see, when I look at the four point six million supplies and materials under that, however much for K through tw- twelve science, however much for, I don't know, K through twelve art. And like, I would like to see it under there where it's going. That would be helpful.
Okay, so, so let me, uh, kinda direct you. If you had the, uh, FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget in front of you.
Yes, got it.
Go back to the tab that says financial section.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there is another tab behind that that says general fund.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's pages starting on page seventy. That is by our project codes, like the high school Buford Walker, that actually breaks out the materials and supplies to how much goes to each one of our project codes. And so that can, that breaks down that four point six million between the general fund and the special revenue funds.
Okay, thank you.
And you could do a similar process for any of the other, um, materials and supplies, purchase services, et cetera.
And then is there a portion in here, you were saying that like we get the monthly, like receipts for what we're spending on? Is all of that, like the, the monthly, like, I'm just trying to see where it goes. So I see this right here, I can break this down now. And then when you're saying the monthly budget of what you spend, is that all added?
I'm just referring to the monthly report, whatever, the monthly reports are that go to the board, Renee. Um, you can, there's some summary reports and things that go.
The monthly reports that you get is, uh, one is just a summary of the monthly, uh, expenditures for salaries and benefits. And then, uh, um, what goes out for material supplies and contract services. It does, it's not a, uh, specified breakdown. And then you receive another report, which is a projection of how we anticipate the end of the year, uh, to land. And that is by project code.
Okay, I think I have enough to start. I'll follow up at the next budget meeting now that I know where to look. Thank you.
Thank you, um. Ms. Purrier, are you ready?
Yes, I can be.
Okay.
Um, thank you, um, Dr. Atkins and team. Um, one of the things I will say, I think it's gonna come back, based on what I heard you say, Dr. Atkins. Um, I know our school counselors right now fill more than one role. They do the academic side and they do, I'm gonna call it mental health. But sometimes in the mental health side, it takes on some personal information as well. So I was very happy to hear that there's going to be some cross-training. Because as we all know, when people are speaking about things that are close to them or personal to them, they will initially have to get to know the mental health workers or feel comfortable in speaking with them. And there are certain students that have relationships with their school counselors at this point in time. So I think that's an excellent idea to, to do some cross-training. And I also think it will help, uh, the people in the audience and in the community understand the differences between the mental health workers or the mental health employees. I'm not exactly sure what title we're gonna give them initially. Right now, we know their mental health, um, but we also know that there are, um, school counselors as well. Um, I'm supportive of what Jennifer was talking about with raises, but I am concerned. And I appreciate how, uh, you're moving forward with this. The more money we take out this year, the less money we'll have next year. And we just don't know what's coming down the pipe. And I'm not saying I don't appreciate the work that everyone has done. But what I am concerned about is if things stay the same from an economic standpoint, even with the potential of us being face-to-face next year, I would want to make sure that we have sufficient funds to cover us. Because I'm not, you know, from an econet- an economic standpoint, I don't know where the city of Charlottesville is going to be. And, um, we all know, um, that the Commonwealth of Virginia is a low tax-based state. But we also know that when municipalities talk about raising taxes, everybody goes into shock. You know, traumatic shock. So, um, I would like to see us err on the side of caution. In bringing back the information that Ms. McKeever has requested, I would like to, um, see how that plays out with regard to everyone. I was very, very ecstatic to see that we're doing something for our custodial staff. We're doing something for our, um, nurses, who are our professional staff members as well. But what impact if we give raises to one group? What impact that will have on the other? Because I know that when you first came on board, Dr. Atkins, we were looking at moving people to a living wage and we had to redo the entire scale. Then we went to, I think it's the fifteen dollar an hour. And we had to look at tho- those, those hourly scales and whatever. And those types of things have an impact on the budget. So if we're looking at raises, what impact is that gonna have on, um, everyone, everyone else? Um, that is a part of, um, that is a part of it. So I just had comments, so, um, you answered, you and your other staff members answered my questions as we, um, went along. So again, um, thank you, because you know, this is just my favorite thing in the whole world, budget. So I'm doing budget with you and I'm doing budget with my day job. And so I'm just budgeted all around.
Thank you, Ms. Purrier.
Thank you, Ms. Purrier. Uh, Mr. Bryant. You're up, sir.
I said a few, I just had a few comments, um, and then one particular question about an item in the budget. Um, I am excited about the budget, um, um, that we were able to fund our initiatives this year based on most of the one-time funding as opposed to going in the direction of perhaps looking at major cuts so that, that it itself, um, is a blessing that we're able to do this. Um, I am in agreeance with, um, Ms. McKeever in regards to raises. But, um, I'm reviewing the comment, um, that, um, Dr. Craft made that, um, Dr. Atkins mentioned that the teacher's salary increase may be larger depending on the governor's budget. So I guess we have to wait and see how that, how that pans out. What's proposed now may be a little larger based on what the governor's budget says. So that may be some leeway in that in terms of giving raises, um, to the teachers and staff members and, um, the custodial staff. So that is definitely, you know, being able to remain competitive, um, is important. So that I am pleased with regards to raises. Um, I've listened to everybody, the year-round discussion, um, perhaps another commission to, um, to look at how schools would look like, quote unquote, in the twenty-second century. Um, so all that is exciting and upcoming. So, um, hopefully we, down the, down the pipe, we'll be, um, engaged in those discussions. Um, there's one item in the budget that stood out to me, uh, Dr. Atkins, the fine arts teacher Buford. Is that a supervisory position or is it just core direct or band disruptive?
That's a good question, um, Mr. Bryant. Uh, Buford has asked us to give them more flexibility in their electives. As you recall, in about two budget, um, prior to this one budget cycles, a Walker moved to providing their students more, uh, electives. And that helped them to get more diversity throughout all of their courses. Buford is now, um, arranging to do the same thing, uh, have, having the flexibility to offer more art. Um, it was art and staff helped me with the second course, art and drama. Art and drama, they can offer more sections, um, help to, uh, have more diversity, more inclusion in those classes with that additional teacher and that flexibility. So that's what they're looking to do.
Okay, and, um, finally, um, it's great to be able to have those, uh, to hire additional social workers, um, that will work in concert with the school counselors, uh, especially to work with those students with social emotional issues. Uh, those social workers will be able to tap into, uh, getting those students engaged and, and back on track. Um, the high school counselors have really kinda zoned in, uh, especially with the seniors, getting them graduated and counting those credits and making sure that they don't target to graduate. And also working with a lot of the underclassmen. So that is gonna be a great, great model, um, with those social workers coming into those schools. So that will kinda freeze up the school counselors, having to deal with a lot of social, not saying that they're not gonna deal with it, but certainly the social works will be a great and added asset to those school counselors. Um, in all the grade levels from pre-K, you know, kindergarten, elementary through high school. So that is really exciting. And I think we're gonna see a major difference in the performance of our students with that model in place.
Thank you.
All right, did I miss anybody? Or if anybody has questions that have come up since they spoke before, Mr. Wade? No, never mind. You were just waving at me to say hi, or he's talking.
Lisa.
Yes, Ms. McKeever.
Um, my, um, I was hoping that what we could see the next time we have a budget session, a work session, is some of the expenditures that will be, that we did not specifically talk about last budget session, which is sort of pre, or last budget year, pre-COVID-ish, um, but that we have since. spent money on, like this engagement specialist, like these sorts of expenditures that um, are going to be in this year's budget, so wouldn't necessarily be reflected in new spending for next year's budget. Um, so I, but so, but I would like to see that, um, kind of disaggregated data on those expenses that were not discussed last year, but are ongoing for next year, if that makes sense.
It does. I think you're talking about any hourly or consulting work that's going on now that we carry over into next year.
That we didn't specifically, I mean, things that we were discussed, yeah, like, yeah, but like that, that were kind of new expenses kind of as a result of COVID or as a result of the change and shifts in the way we've been operating, but that are going to continue into next year. I'd like to see kind of that, those expenses as one of this dependencies or something of that sort.
Be happy to do that, yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm looking through, trying to look through the screen here. All right, I don't see anybody, um, raising their hand. I, I want to thank everybody for bringing up some great questions. Again, I guess my, my request would be, um, to, to again, just have a more robust discussion about how, how we're going to manage that leftover cares money and, and what our, um, hopes and asks of city council will be, um, because this is, this is crucial and, um, you know, school for our students in this community, um, as Dr. Atkins said, you know, this is, um, cornerstone. Um, there's a huge, um, need to continue to, you know, improve the physical space and we know that that's another discussion, um, but an ongoing concern as far as just um, getting our students, you know, what, what they deserve for Charlottesville as a community. And I know there's a, an emphasis and, and that's very important for everybody, but, but that's a, another huge, um, topic that we need to, to discuss and, and review going forward. But, um, all of the, the proposed, um, improvements and supports that you've brought forward with this budget, again, you know, through the, uh, lens of equity and, and trying to really, um, support our teachers, um, and just the phenomenal, um, work and effort that they are putting into, um, currently under the situation and then going forward as we transition to face to face, um, this next year. Um, I, I too would hope that it could, could be more as far as teachers always, and, and I know we all, we all feel that way. Um, so I am supportive of looking at those numbers, um, at least the two-step, um, to see what that might look like and, and how that would impact, um, again, overall, um, the allocation of the cares money and what we're, we're left with. Um, so thank you, everybody for the work. And Dr. Atkins, if you have any other, you know, further comments about this, thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, thank, thank you all. Thanks for the questions and the comments. We'll bring that back, um, responses back to the next board meeting. Um, and Ms. Power went over the, um, upcoming events. So we will adhere to that schedule. Again, thank you to everyone for your work that you put into this. Um, we're moving forward and we're so looking forward to getting our staff vaccinated. Congratulations, uh, everyone who was able to get into the portal and, um, schedule a time. Um, and thank you Beth Baptist, uh, and Kim Powell for following all of the directions that you were given uh, and following the protocol that Charlottesville City Schools were given in order to upload, uh, our roster and to get our staff members in the CDC um, queue in order to be able to schedule. We appreciate the work that everyone, uh, has done. Um, you know, we, we know that, that, uh, someone had to be first and, and we're grateful we were first. Um, and it's, I'm glad our, our staff are out there and they are starting to, uh, register and get those appointments. But thank you again for following the protocol and making sure that we adhere to all of the instructions that we were given. We really appreciate that. And Ms. Torres, we look forward to coming back with the board and with those responses and continuing the budget development process.
Thank you, um, Dr. Atkins. I appreciate that. Um, as a reminder, there was, and I don't know if we can post again that um, slide with the upcoming meetings, but I also did want to add to that, that January twentieth, this next week, there is a PTO budget session at Jackson Villa. Um, and I believe one of the sessions that we had last week, um, we've kind of moved, um, the group that we were going to meet with as far as at, uh, Walker and Buford combined. I believe there was a, a conflict with the PTO meeting. So we made the decision, um, and I believe Dr. Hastings, um, and, and hopefully Buford is getting the word out that those families, if they would like to, um, join the Jackson Villa PTO budget session, um, that is January twentieth at seven PM. Um, and then we have the, um, upcoming meetings as stated earlier, and those are on the screen right now for your review. So thank you, everybody. Um, please keep in mind, um, if you have questions or comments or concerns about this going forward, um, you can reach out to the school board, um, at, uh, school board, um, at charlottesvilleschools.org and, uh, we will be more than happy to take those comments. And thank you again, everybody, for your time and the work going forward. And if there are no further questions or comments from anybody, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.